At this time, we're going to start this meeting. This is a joint City Council and Planning and Zoning Committee meeting. And we'll be -- we're here at the City Hall. This is October 2nd, 2012. And at this time, I'd like to formally open our meeting. As I mentioned, it is a Planning and Zoning meeting along with the City Council. We're here with the Chairman Lee Daniels as well as also here from the Board. We've got Steve Gearhart. We've got Stephen Ellis. I'm sorry, we've got Walter Harden. We don't have Steve here. We do have Kathy Briscoe and Gary Kautz. So we do have a quorum of the City Council along with P&amp;Z. All members of Council are present. I'd like to invite Pastor John Knox up to the podium to kick it all off with an invocation. If you would, please rise for the invocation. We'll follow that with the pledge of allegiance.
Father, we're thankful for a beautiful fall day. We just really appreciate it. Father, we want to just pause for a moment as well to express our gratitude for those that are willing to lead, and especially those that are willing to lead here in the city. Father, a special prayer for our servants that many times go unnoticed, for those who are City employees and serve in very quiet ways, that keep the wheels turning, that help make our lives what they are. We pray in particular for our police officers here in the city and our deputies and troopers working in the county as well, for their safety and the well-being of their families. Father, we pray that for wisdom and discernment as profitable discussion ensues and good decisions are made in Jesus' name.
And join us in the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can the Texas flag, please? Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
You may be seated. As I mentioned, this is a joint meeting of P&amp;Z and the City Council. P&amp;Z Board will be looking into the Schedule B and C, which is the concept plan that is a part of the Comprehensive Development Agreement along with the CP standards. And with that, you might want to consider some financial issues as far as the city are concerned. If you'll notice on your monitor, for the City Council will be considering adopting and agreeing upon the Comprehensive Development Agreement, which is comprehensive of the two parts that we're asking P&amp;Z to look into today. If you'll remember previously, we heard from the applicant on this project, there was quite a bit of discussion regarding it. We have an applicant that is proposing development of some 5,000 homes approximately, residences out on the west side of town, to develop it, to bring forward some park property, some municipal service locations. They are granting us some easement for right-of-way, for an extension to 567 Loop, as well as some property for what's called the RPZ, which is an extension of the airport. There's also some utility easement being granted through this property. And I think they're bringing good concept plan before us. There are five different bullet points that we spoke about at the discussion, one of which was the roadways and some clarification on the roads. And we spoke with the engineer at that time. And you'll notice that before your dais, that everybody's got a new picture to look at. And I would like to point out that in that picture, you will not see any width measurements, but there is a descripted area over on the left-hand side of the document, which sort of outlines that when the time comes, they will adhere to city standards and bring that before the Council for approval, also P&amp;Z. The other thing I'd like to mention is this development is also allowing the city to inspect properties. All structures will fall into inspection by the city, which is normally not something that happens with properties out in the ETJ. The other thing is, we had talked about a deadline on a few different areas. Scott, do you want to pick up on where we are right now?
The deadline on?
Well, we talked about putting in some sort of a timeframe for dissolution of the freshwater district, I believe, before, and setting up some standards. I believe originally, it was proposed that following the MUD election in November, that there would possibly be a dissolution, but it was upon the applicant to clear up that freshwater district.
Mayor, that's correct. The language was added in the CDA. And if I can call Mr. Wayne Olson, who helped draft that change to the CDA, to the podium, and defer your attention to what section that is.
Yeah, I just want to get everybody on the same page before we turn it over to Planning and Zoning. Mr. Olson?
For the record, my name is Wayne Olson. Mayor, could you help me again to the specific issue that we want to address?
At this time, I'd like to just point out that we've asked for some clarification in the body of the language, the document, that has to do with a term, a timeframe for dissolution of the Denton Freshwater Supply District.
What we added to the agreement, does the Council have a copy of the revised agreement?
Yes, they've all been given a copy.
On page 19 of the agreement, Section 11.5 provides that the freshwater supply district is supposed to be promptly petitioned for dissolution upon the confirmation election for the MUD. So on November 6th, Tuesday, November 6th, there will be a confirmation election for the municipal utility district, assuming that it is approved. Then after confirmation, they are required by this agreement to dissolve the freshwater supply district. We added language, the underlying sentence says, "Notwithstanding the foregoing, regardless of whether the district confirmation election has occurred, the developer shall petition for the dissolution of the freshwater district on or before January 15th, 2013."
And we also, if I'm not mistaken, there was a deadline given for the comprehensive study, some language drafted for that as well. I just want to make everybody point out, that's in 5.1 on page 8.
Thank you, Mayor. In Section 5.1, we provided that the comprehensive study shall be completed and a copy of such study provided to the city on or before May 31st, 2013, so May 31st of next year. Comprehensive study is the document which will detail all of the water sewer type improvements that are going to need to be constructed by the developer in order to serve the Knox Ranch development. And based upon that, the city can make its determination of what requirements the city needs to agree to, what requirements the city will have to meet, and come up with estimates on what that will cost the city in order to provide services to the developer.
Now, to your knowledge, is there any additional language changes that we need to mention at this time?
We did include in the agreement that the water and sewer rates would be the same for this development as for the out-of-city rates for everybody, so one and a half times the in-city rate. That was obviously a major topic of discussion at the last meeting we had with these two bodies here. But based upon the direction that I received from the city after that meeting, I did make that change in the agreement.
And then I believe there was also an impact fee language that was stricken out, and that's in 4.3 on page 7. We heard from the applicant during the discussion that they weren't aware of the fact that we had already imposed the 50 percent reduction.
The provision that we discussed at the last meeting was the developer asked that we assess impact fees to them at 50 percent of the rate we're charging other people, in light of the fact that they are, under this agreement, going to be building a number of improvements themselves, and they were making other dedications to the city. That has been stricken from this agreement. And based upon that, if this agreement is approved by the Council, they would be required to pay the same impact fee as any other developer would be required to pay.
Which is already discounted.
Which was already discounted when it was set. That's correct.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Olson, that you can think of?
I think at this stage, no. I think I'll just wait to answer questions that the Council, P&amp;Z might have.
So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Chairman Daniels to conduct his, the Planning and Zoning portion of this.
Our portion of the meeting is approved, the consideration and approval of the Comprehensive Development Agreement. CTM GT Granberry LLC for the proposed development on the Knox Ranch. Comprehensive Development Agreement shall be included in the Concept Plan, Standards, and Attachments. Does anyone have any comments or questions at this time? Okay.
I have one question. On the one and a half times water rate, is that phased out over time, or is that implemented for the rest of our lifetime, is that five years from now, or is that expected from the rate of the city?
Well, I'm Ken Hackett, 2715 Harvest Side Drive. I'm not aware that the water rates are part of the CP plan and CP standards.
I believe you're correct. Yeah. As I mentioned earlier, the Council will be considering that as part of the final decision, but it is something economics-wise, financial-wise, that we are asking you guys to look at, but as far as the establishment of the rate that would be for the Council to decide in the contract. No.
Anyone have any?
We're here to answer any questions as it relates to the comprehensive plan and the development standards.
Anyone have any questions?
Mayor, please. Give us another question.
Well, you can comment all you want, but it's not for, it's not a part of the actual portions that Planning and Zoning is considering. That's part of an agreement between the city and the developer, and that will become under the decision made by the agreement between the City Council on behalf of the city and the developer.
I would add comment to that. We want your support, obviously, of the P&amp;Z. We are still of the position that the same rate should be held as in the city in our development, not the 150 percent rate, as it would discourage development and increase costs that on large lot developments have impacted very greatly around this city and throughout this county.
It would affect the resale?
It would definitely affect the resale of the property.
Is there a provision for landscape wells?
Yes, it's in the, it's in the development agreement, that non-potable wells can be used.
They would still be permitted by the city, but they would be earmarked on the permit for irrigation purposes only, generally for common space.
We hope to encourage agricultural-type homesteads with horses and so forth, so we know that they would want water and would not always want to be buying city water for those purposes.
And I would like to add that, Scott, this is basically what we're talking about, is for this Phase 1, is what we're developing right now at this point. Forty lots, I believe, is what we're under discussion. But we are overall, concept plan for the entire development.
We're still asking approval for the entire concept plan and design standards that would apply holistically to the property. But the way procedurally the CDA works out is, the first phase, those 40 lots, would be permitted prior to the detailed engineering analysis. No more development would ensue until that engineering analysis has been submitted and approved by the city.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Ken. Do anyone have any comments or make a motion? Well, I guess the public hearing, he'll give both of us, I guess he'll have to close it. You'll be closing the public hearing for the?
I need you to close the public hearing for P&amp;Z and make a recommendation for Council.
We have no speaker cards and?
Scott, you want to say something?
Mr. Mayor, I do want to comment on one thing. As we have a modified exhibit to those design standards, which are the street templates, to address the question that was posed by you at the last public hearing, if you do want to act on that and wish to embrace the modified street template with the language that you see before you, then I would recommend that you do so. Either the previous template that was submitted two weeks ago, that was provided by the developer, or the modified one here to address the comment based on the last public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, we're in agreement with this modified exhibit.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we're closing the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the concept plan presented, with the addition of the modified street profile that we provided.
Okay, we have a motion, have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second, on the favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. That the entire end of it?
Well, Mr. Daniels, I believe you can adjourn your commission, and you guys can have a seat somewhere relaxing. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Council will pick it up here. As you just heard, it was a unanimous decision by those present of the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve the development design standards along with the concept plan, along with this modified street template that we have before us. And now, we need to take action on whether or not to adopt the Comprehensive Development Agreement. We still have an open public hearing on our portion of it. I'm going to ask if there's anybody out there in the public that wants to speak regarding That's beside you guys. Does Council have any questions for the applicant?
Mayor, I have one.
All right, Mr. Allen.
Mr. Hackett, you were talking about the water, and the wells are going to be for irrigation for the houses and for the right-of-ways and stuff, is that correct?
That, plus I believe the agreement allows for residents to provide those too for non-potable purposes. The houses will have to be connected to the central water system.
The houses, yes. So if I'm understanding right, the only water, the 40 houses, the 40 houses you're going to build on the first phase will be used in for the house use only. So that's all the water we're going to be really needing to supply to y'all, just a little dab?
That's correct, but I'm not expecting all of those early lots to drill private wells on top of it. Some may, some may not. It'll strictly be an optional process.
Oh, okay, maybe I misunderstood you. The wells y'all are going to drill for irrigation, is that going to be only for the development, or is it going to be for the homeowners also to use for their irrigation?
To wait, correct me if I'm wrong, Ross, the way we understand it is the provision allows for individual homeowners to drill a private well, not so different that's already allowed inside the city for irrigation purposes. We have what that is. I thought we got that part right. That's something we believe that should be in the provision, to allow homeowners to do it for non-potable purposes only, irrigation, livestock, things of that sort, since we're going to have large lots out there, you know, two acre, three acre, five, maybe even larger.
Is there any ordinance against that, Scott, right now?
Let me defer to Alba regarding water well drilling ordinances. If you have a two or three acre lot, can a homeowner on a rural estate lot drill a water well for irrigation purposes?
I believe in the plan, it was talking more about the parks properties and the?
I thought it was, Mayor, but I was just going to?
That there would actually be a separate well drilled for that kind of?
That's the way I thought it was, but I wouldn't posit it so.
We have some existing ranch wells out there that we hope to intend to use if we can, but if not, provide some irrigation for the large park areas that we're talking about committing to.
But in the contract, it will say that y'all won't supply water or sell water to these 40 homes for any purposes, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, I have no problem. Thank you.
Any other question for the applicant from Council, Mr. Hewlett?
Yeah, I got one for Mr. Hackett out there. You talked about these lots, the first 40 lots being up to five, maybe even larger?
No, they're all kind of scheduled out at two to just over two acres. What I'm saying, when we move west into a future phases, then those lots might be three, four, five acres, even larger.
So will these lots, these first 40, or maybe even down the line, will they be permitted to have livestock and outer buildings and things like that on them?
There'll probably be some outbuilding allowances, but I don't think those are going to be livestock lots at all. They're just not large enough.
Mr. McKethan?
So you're not really asking for the potable water on those, on those particular phases, only the first two phases, really, the 40 lots and the larger phase, right? If the smaller, if the later phases are smaller lots, you wouldn't, you wouldn't need the potable water on the wells?
I agree, although I have noticed some residents in Granberry have private wells on very small lots, but of course, those are probably drilled before the new spacing standards and so forth, so that would be very restricted.
Almost make it impossible.
Yeah.
Yeah, the federal government, all the regulations are going to cut out those.
Right.
You're just not going to drill them. If you do, you're going to be?
We really need those for our common areas and for these large rural lots. That's it.
Were you large rural, what do you mean by that?
Well, the two acre and larger lots to the west. Now, again, I'd probably suggest to you, from a marketing standpoint, those first row of lots will not, may have some outbuildings on it, but do not see it as agricultural-type lots where horses will be kept and things like that. They're just not large enough, in our opinion. I know people do that on one acre and small lots.
I think if people buy five or 10, they'd want to put them on it. I would.
Yes, sir. Exactly.
Mr. Tyra?
I have questions for?
Oh, I'm sorry.
The addition of that was, my next question was, has that, has that property been perked or been tested for the septic, for septic use, if you put septics out there?
We haven't done our perk test, but obviously, we will do perk test, and we will meet the state and county standards.
And that does limit it to a two acre lot minimum for any kind of a septic?
And if it does fail, I mean, you got to go back to the drawing board.
We'll have to bring sewer.
Drawing board, yeah.
We'll have to bring sewer to it.
That's all I?
Mr. Tyra?
I don't have any question. Ken, I have questions for Mr. Dillard and Mr. Olson.
All right. Ms. Dillard, can I call you up?
Mayor, I have one question.
Oh, you have one more for Mr. Hackett? Mr. Allen?
I know my son tried to split some acreage up for homes, and is, since that's in the county, is it so many, like one home per three acres? And it's some only, have y'all worked it out with the county?
Well, that's the whole purpose of the two acre minimum standard when you have no centralized sewer. County standards require a two acre or greater size if you have no sewer, but you have centralized water.
Good, I knew you probably already checked it, but I just thought about it.
Right. So you don't have to worry about three acre lots being cut up into two, one and a half acre lots. It cannot be done.
Thank you, Mr. Hackett. Ms. Dillard?
And Mr. Olson too, as well, because these have kind of become questions that anybody can answer and get it over with quicker. It takes them a lot of their time. And I was thrown off a little bit in the P&amp;Z meeting when the mayor, when you spoke, Mayor, about not being able to, they didn't have anything to do with the rates. Is that because it's going to be a Council vote on that?
It's a community agreement between the developer and the city.
So speaking directly then to the Comprehensive Development Agreement, you know, you spoke last meeting, and so did Mr. Olson, so I felt like when Mr. Olson talked a while ago, I just want to clarify it so I can have a comfortable level to vote to approve this if we move forward. And that, right now, as we sit here today, if we approve this, as you all have agreed to, that study that you talked about in detail, we're going to be clear that, and I'm going to kind of paraphrase it in my own simple language, but if we approve this Comprehensive Development Agreement tonight, which you all have brought forward, we're not tied to those other phases or any of those other situations until we get that agreement, or we get that study in hand, and you and your companies had a chance to look over it and see what impact it could have on us financially. So we're not tied to anything in the future. We're just tied to that little strip that we're talking about here, that's going to be sewer and some of our water uses, is that what we understand?
That also is my understanding of the way that it's going to work.
And with that said, Mr. Olson, then I want that comfortable level from the attorney that you've heard what we've talked about, what we talked about last time.
Right. And I do feel comfortable in that regard, but the whole key to this, in my opinion, is getting the comprehensive study so that your engineer can look at it and determine what it is that is required, and what is that going to cost. And she can meet with city staff, and together, they can determine how we're going to fund that, how much time will it take to implement it, and from there, the city will have to make decisions on what it can agree, under what time schedule for the developer. The way the agreement's written, the developer will tell us when they're ready to develop a phase, they will give us a notice, and based upon the comprehensive study, which will have to be completed by May 31st, we can then say, yes, we can do that, or no, it's going to take longer than that, either because physically it'll take longer to complete construction, or financially, we don't have the ability to make those improvements currently.
And you addressed earlier, when you stood up, about the actual 1.5 on the water. Now, when we, if we approve this plan tonight, this Comprehensive Development Agreement, all that's included that, and that will go into force immediately with this, that will not be a separate item, that'll be all involved, and it'll be all encompassed in this agreement.
That's correct. That's correct. Thank you.
Any other questions for the attorney and the engineer from the Council? Thank you. Does the applicant want to address any of the things that we've talked about as far as bullet points at this point?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. I guess what this agreement comes down to, three or four bullet points from our perspective. We've been negotiating what we felt like in good, in good faith on many items, of many layers, for several years here. But there are several items here that were in the final draft provided by the city attorney that, to be frank with you, and I've shared this with some Council members, and I've shared it with the city manager, that the developer just cannot go along with. And until we can reach some mutual agreement on those key issues, i.e. water rates, how impact fees are going to be credited, and what we think align with state statute, we are also asking for one year for the comprehensive study to be completed, only because, only because we have to gather all the information from the city. We've got to prepare the study, we've got to send the study back to the city engineer. It's going to go back and forth two or three times. We just think six months may be a little fast, but you, the city, have a safeguard. If we want to do another phase, we have to provide the study. So there's a safeguard in there for you, whether it be six months, nine months, or 12 months. We just think 12 months is a more reasonable timeframe, given all the issues that have got to be done between now and a year from now. That's one. That's not an overriding issue on us, but we think it's a more practical issue for both parties. Impact fees, I may not be the perfect person to stand here and explain this, but we too believe we won't, if we're gonna be charged 100% of impact fees, we think it should follow state statute and be credited toward our offsite costs. If I'm wrong somewhere here, please correct me from my side or from the council's side, but to participate proportionally with the city on offsite and then charges impact fees is basically double charging us. So all we're asking for, if you are gonna require 100% impact fees, they be credited to our offsite costs, just like any other developer.
Scott, I thought we already gave them credit for 50% as the developer moves forward. Isn't that the impact fee structure that we operate under now currently for development?
Well, when the impact fee ordinance was passed, it's true that there was a certain amount of the city underwriting a portion of that, roughly 50% of the impact fee cost. And I see our attorney make it to the proportionality question real quick.
Saw him jump up as well. Can you clarify for me what we're talking about here?
Let me put it this way, even though we're only charging all developers 50% of what we could charge as an impact fee, the impact fees are charged for specific improvements that the city envisioned needed to be made to serve new development. And whether or not that took in consideration improvements that are gonna be serving Knox Ranch, I can't tell you, but you have a capital improvements plan that you've adopted that actually specifies what improvements are necessary in the future to serve new development and outside of Granbury. Once this agreement is executed, if the Knox Ranch developer is going to end up building some of those improvements himself and pay for it himself, then you've basically charged him an impact fee for something that he paid for separately, and my opinion is that he ought to be given a credit for that. So in other words, if you have a sewer line that's in your current capital improvement plan that's supposed to be built and it's costing a million dollars, and you use that million dollar figure to base your current impact fees, and if the developer builds that million dollar line himself, he ought to be given a credit against the impact fees the way, in accordance with the procedure set forth in your impact fee ordinance. It already provides for that, and I wouldn't suggest you do anything different than what your ordinance provides for. He's entitled to a credit if that's the situation, but I can't tell you today, and I'm not sure anybody can tell you today, whether or not this developer's going to be building those improvements that are already covered by your capital improvements plan. We need to get that comprehensive study in place before we're gonna know the answer to that. So can we agree, can we come up with some language and agree that once the comprehensive study has been completed and we determine that the developer is going to make improvements that he's also paying an impact fee for, and then we'll give him a credit if that happens? I can recommend that to you, I think that's a fair approach to take if the council's in favor of proceeding in that manner.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Allen?
Like whenever other developers come here, and I've just been on the council for a year and a half and I haven't had this come before me yet or rather was involved in it, but like say Catalina Bay, Abe's Landing, when that developer, we charged them impact fees and you're telling me, if I'm understanding right, we give that money back to them if they put their own sewer lines and stuff in, is that what you're saying?
Not their own sewer lines, but if they put in the sewer...
Come into the development.
Yeah, if they put in a sewer line that the city was planning to put in and you were charging the impact fee to reimburse yourselves because you were gonna put that in for the benefit of the developer, if Abe's Landing ends up building that sewer line for the city, then yes, they ought to be given some money back, and your ordinance says that they get a pro-rata credit on every impact fee that's paid, they get a percentage reduction in the impact fees so that ultimately, they'll be paid back in full once their development is complete.
I agree with you, I don't have a problem as long as we're doing it with everybody else.
Right, and frankly, what I'm recommending to you is no different than I would tell you you need to do with every developer. This is no special benefit for Knox Ranch, this is just what they require.
Standard operating, that's what we're already doing, I believe, is that not right, Scott?
In the case of Catalina Bay, all those water and sewer lines were basically internal to the development, not part of any kind of capital plan to my knowledge, as they weren't off system improvements needed to support other developments, so...
How about Abe's Landing, because I know we took it in.
I couldn't...
Let me address Abe's Landing. Abe's Landing, actually, we actually paid for the upsizing of the water and sewer line out there, is what we did. The only thing they designed for is what it would take for their development, and then what we did is we paid the difference of what we was wanting for our capacity and so forth, so we actually paid a portion of the water and the sewer.
Well, with a comprehensive study, we're gonna know what the proposal is from the applicant, and so with that in mind, we have the language already in this agreement to address that, is that, that it relates to the comp study and what the results of that study are, is there no language that reflects towards that?
There is no language in the agreement today. I have drafted some language, I just gave a copy of it to Scott if the council wants to add that. If we don't add it to the agreement, your ordinance would require that anyway, your impact fee ordinance says that if a developer builds improvements that the impact fees are charged for, then he's entitled to a credit. But if the developer wants to have specific language in the CDA that restates that, I have no problem with that and I can recommend that to the council. I've drafted some language that I just brought for discussion purposes tonight, but...
In anticipation?
In anticipation, this might be an issue, yes, but it was not anything that I was directed to put in the agreement for tonight because it was still a topic of discussion, but the language I've drafted, I can recommend to you because I believe your ordinance requires it anyway.
That, in other words, Councilman Tyra was asking, if it's not in there, why do we need it, and I believe it makes the developer feel more comfortable.
I think that's what it is. You're hearing bullet points, I don't know if the developers through with all their issues, but they've got a couple of issues that they're uncomfortable with and that's between you and the developer, whether or not it's addressed within the agreement.
That's what an agreement is, is a workout between the two. Mr. Wilson, I see you standing there. Tell us who you are just for the record and address some of these issues, if you would.
My name is Kirk Wilson, I am here tonight on behalf of Centurion American Development Group. The, how we see it right now is the CIP currently does not reflect improvements in this area. What we would hope will happen is after the comprehensive study is done, there will be elements in that comprehensive study that can be added to your amended CIP that would allow credits to be realized on our project, but we wanna make that clear now that we would want those properly added to the CIP at that time. And our concern right now is simply that we would build all these improvements, there wouldn't be adequate attention paid to add those to the CIP, we want that to be done. This is a big investment out here on a 4,000 unit subdivision, and we do believe there will be components here that need to be added to the CIP and we wanna make that clear, but we'd like something stated into the agreement that would reflect that.
Is it 4,000 or 5,000?
Forty-nine hundred and ninety-three units, I believe, is the EU on it.
Okay, I've only heard 5,000 is mine.
It's almost 5,000.
Yeah.
It's seven or something.
Okay, all right. Mr. Hackett, did you have any more bullets that you wanna throw out there?
Well, sure, and I think, I'd like Kirk to stay up here for some of this, just to be... The 5,000 number of units was based on the entire property being sewed. Now that we're going to two acre and larger lots on almost 800 acres, that density is gonna drop significantly. Now, we don't know exactly how much just yet, but it's gonna be a significant overall impact at the sewer level and the water capacity level, so we don't think we're gonna quite scare people the way we think that's going around with 5,000, oh, you're gonna double the size of the city. That's not gonna happen, that's not gonna happen. That's why we're changing the development standards to reflect market and what's out there, and hopefully, this will be a standard that the city can live with in future projects. Hopefully, we're the only one that is bold enough to do it, but who knows? I wanna reinforce how imperative it is that we, as a developer, given all of the things that have been exchanged on behalf of the city, that the water rates could kill you out there if we're talking about having 150% water rates on the project. We have brought this up from day one, we have made it an issue since day one, and we think it's the only right and fair way to do, given the level of commitment that we've made to the city upfront, given to the level of committee, commitment that we made since then for different elements within this comprehensive development agreement. The water rates are imperative to be competitive to other developments in the city and outside of the city. And many developments today in Granbury that are paying 150 rates, well, you can just drive through them and see all the for sale signs. And one of the main reasons is, is because of water rates. People can't afford $400 and $500 a month water bills, you just can't do it. So this has been important to us, if we can't work this out today, we're back to our point that let us try to craft language to make this palatable to the city and to the council members and to the staff and put this agreement off till next week, till next meeting. Now, if we can come to that conclusion tonight, then we're here to move forward, but we've got, I just heard new language just now that probably needs to be crafted in. So we want the development agreement to be right, but we also want it to be fair for both sides.
I'm gonna hear from Mr. Tyra first, he's got a question for you regarding this.
For you, Ken, so you're very comfortable then with allowing these changes that's come forward today, just currently?
What I'm just hearing, I think...
Yes, yeah, and we see that you're actually telling the council that the water rate could be a deal breaker, I mean, it could be a real, it's a big issue.
It's huge issue.
So you're saying the next meeting, you could wait till then, see, I always thought there was a deadline and tonight was the cutoff date or something, that's why I was...
We're in a critical path as it relates to the election. We have invested a lot of money in the project, we've invested, we're gonna move forward with the election, but the whole idea was to have this agreement in place in June, because there are funding issues that we've gotta go through. Nobody wants to keep spending money if we don't have an agreement, so we're just late in the game to be hammering these details out. Another two weeks will not hurt us, but we want the agreement to be right.
That makes sense, I appreciate that.
Just as I hear the dialogue right now, we have three issues walking in the door. One of them was the rates, which we're still talking about, but as far as the impact fee goes, if we're clear on this point of revising the CIP to adequately address what we believe or what the studies will show, our improvements should qualify for CIP and for credits, then I think we're fine on the impact fee issue if we get that down. The third issue is just the comprehensive, the timing of the comprehensive study. All we're asking for is that date to be April 2014 instead of April 2013, so...
I guess one year...
One year from today was what I understood.
Whenever it's time.
Right.
One year from whenever.
Doesn't the agreement right now say April?
It was giving you a six month timeframe.
Six, okay.
Pushing it to September 30th of 2012.
This may be bold.
I mean, 2013.
I understand, but I'm, when I wrote, Ken, I proposed pushing it back a year, and so, yes, and so, that's what I, that's what I proposed, and that's what I think is reasonable. That gives us, we can't, as Ken cited, we cannot move forward into other phases until this comprehensive study is done, but giving us a year, I think the document read March 31 then of 2013, I was proposing the document read March 13th of 2014, or March 31 of 2014. That's what I proposed in an email to Ken.
Like a year and two or three months?
Yes, sir. So if that was reflected and the change on the impact fees were down to the point of discussing the water rates, which that is significant issue, if it could be resolved tonight, that'd be great, but if we need to have further dialogue over the next two weeks, we're in favor of that as well, we need to do that.
And if I could, just to clarify, you're saying you wouldn't start the 800 acre development for another year then, right?
All we're doing is giving ourselves the comprehensive study time to the data.
So you could deliver the comprehensive agreement earlier and start the development then earlier?
Yes, if we turned it in quicker, that would be good, but right now, it was a deadline reading March 31, 2013, and there were concerns raised by our UDF, our funding partner, and we were responding to that.
Mr. Perkel?
I'm gonna look at things as a businessman. First of all, what does, what kind of profit do we make on our water? Can you tell me what profit we make per month on water?
Well, right now, we're, on water itself, we're losing money, and on electric, we're making money, and so we're, that rate study was trying to make all of them.
So we're losing money every month on water, okay? With this bunch, they're putting the lines in, they're putting all the interstructure in, you know, of course, if we charge them the same amount, we're gonna still lose money, but we've gotta figure out why we're losing money. But any business that somebody builds you and gives it to you to operate, you know, we've gotta figure out how to make money out of it, I mean, this is...
Mayor, can I ask a question?
You know, you don't understand it.
Perfect.
Yeah, I'm good.
Well, as far as trying to get the utilities to where they pay for themselves, that's not what we've got before us, but we do have a rate study before us in a future agenda, and we're hoping to balance all that out. Mr. Allen, you have something to say?
Yeah, I think that we'll get the other wells in line next year and a half, two years, our water rate will go where we can make money off of it. But we got y'all here, there's 40 houses, and I personally don't have a problem with the year, the impact fee, Mr. Olson said it was good, that's good for me. Only problem we got is what a rate looks like. And the reason I was asking a question is about irrigation and stuff, because I thought, well, if the city, if we were making money, we wanna sell all the water we can, we lose money, we'll sell less water we can, you know, get a littler truck instead of a bigger one. But how would it work if, we worked out, if, I'm just saying to myself and I'm speaking for any of the other gentlemen up here, say the first phase, you know, it's 40 houses, it's gonna take a year to get them built, and so you hope to do it in a year, then you've got the study to do, come back to us. If we did it where the first phase was the regular rate we charge everybody else outside the city limits, and then whenever you come to the second rate and we get all that water business out there for the next phase, maybe the council at that time could sit down and say, hey, we'll go with the city rates right then for everybody, and these 40 people's gonna build, we know their rate will be reduced. The county's the ones making out of this, not the city. The city's not making a nickel out of this thing, it's the county. So if y'all went to the county to ask them if they would have a little bit on this water rate with y'all?
I'm sorry, what was that question?
I said, the city's not making a nickel off of this deal. Now, I know, Ken, you and I are gonna, we've argued over breakfast, but I know y'all give a lot for the airport, the 32 acres and all that, I understand it, I agree, but if we got ready to put a water plant in or a sewer treatment plant, wouldn't y'all want some of that money, y'all donate to be credit to that?
Well, the agreement doesn't call for that, and that's some of the issues that we've raised, but the agreement doesn't address any of that.
Well, it does, it does, it does address external upgrades that are required.
Only the impact fee issue.
Yes, on the impact fee, not on the rate.
The individual contributions that we made to the city.
That's what I'm saying, that comes off, what they're talking about, the $11 million.
Yes.
That comes off. But I'm saying it, I want y'all here, I'm for this deal, but I'm also representing 6,000 people that live in the city limits of Granbury, and the water rate may be the deal that breaks this whole deal, costs everybody millions of dollars, but the county is the ones making money out of this right now. When you build, we don't get no taxes for 15 years. So how do we go to people and say, your rate's here and y'all's rate's up here, you know? I'd love to see this table at the next meeting.
Well, I think that's our position and has been for several days if we can't come to a resolution on the water rates. It is a development backbreaker, and if it was gonna be a loggerhead position, we should've known about this two years ago.
How come the council's just now hearing about it, oh, Ken?
Don't get me to lying.
Well, regarding the rate, one thing that concerns me, gentlemen, is the fact that we are setting a... we are setting a precedent for future development by doing something along this line to where somebody outside of the city limits is given a lesser water rate. And whereas everybody else that's already taking water from us is at that 1.5 factor, how are we going to address that and appease those people to where they don't feel like they've got the, been slapped up across the head?
I'm sure that Kirk can add to this, but let me reinforce what my perspective is, is that the city and this development group entered into an early agreement because y'all wanted an airport, we wanted our district. It was a mutual agreement. Contributions were made. We believe millions of dollars of contributions. I don't know what value y'all gave it on behalf of your contribution to the state, but I'm sure it was a number. I had some of the local appraisers look at some of the locations that we dedicated to the city, the simple, just to give you an example, the four acres where Tractor Supply was built, $4 a square foot. Now, we're not suggesting those values today. What we're suggesting to you is that that was a prime commercial dual corner right up front that we gave away. We also agreed to relocate the overhead easements. We also agreed to dedicate the 567. Those are millions of dollars worth of property that given to the city so we could move forward on this, to suggest that a Spanish Trail came forward to you 20 years ago and provided any benefit to the city, much less the contribution of the offsite that we're giving, much less the impact fees. Plus, we are designing and developing two city standards. You have a city standard project, not an inferior design project, which you know that causes problems for your staff. Now, I don't want to contradict everybody in here, but I would hasten you to look at the budget before you say water is losing money. The water budget is contributing hundreds of thousands of dollars each month to the general fund. Now, it's how you allocate cost and staff, whether it loses money or not.
That's for another day of discussion.
That's another day.
And it's paying expenses of the utility fund.
I understand that.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion if I could.
But...
Let me, let me chime in on this for just a second, then we'll come back to you. Mr. Wilson?
The precedent issue that you brought up, the only thing, the only thing I would say back on the precedent issue is that we, this is a unique proposal. I don't think anyone has walked in the door up to now and went all the way through entitlement on 4,000 units or more in the area. So, we have planned a 4,000-unit plus or minus subdivision. We have agreed to pay for millions of dollars' worth of utility improvements to put this system online, and I don't think this is a comparable situation to someone just coming out in the ETJ and plating 50 lots or 100 lots or one house. So, I don't think this is a precedent situation where there could be an incredible argument that someone that pulls their water bill out says, oh, I'm paying 1.5, but the developer area over here that has been a master plan community building the city standards, I think those are not comparable situations. It's not a precedent in my, in my mind.
I fully understand where you're coming from, sir. But we are talking about a build-out over a period of time, gentlemen. And with that in mind, why can't we state that we'll, at this startup, as was previously mentioned, we start off at 1 and 1/2, and over a period of time, we develop it to where when we see the development taking off and those homes coming in, that we drop it back to a 1% based upon the number of residencies? And at that point, I'm sure our system of utility rate billing can also issue some sort of a credit back, prorating the rate back to the landowner through our billing department. I mean, I, I think we have, we're this close, but I think we need to have some establishment of the build-out phase, because you know and I know this economy is volatile right now. Things don't always go the way we hope they will with buildings and sales, construction. It could be slow. It could be 10 years down the line. And we, we want to be a give and take kind of a thing here. On behalf of the city, I think we'd love to see this development move forward, but I'd like to add some sort of a language that addresses a build-out so that it encourages you to get out there and make those sales happen, and we see some development coming as a result of it.
And if your goal is to encourage our sales, a 1.5X water rate system does not do that, and we cannot tell you we could put lots on the ground and effectively do a sales program in that regard. And so, that's why we believe that we're down to one issue, but we'd like to delay this item for two weeks to allow further discussion. And really, that's where we are unless we can resolve it to 1X now, which doesn't sound like that's, there's a clear path for that. But we cannot, with good conscience, tell you we can put lots out down, lots out down there and have a sales program at 1.5X.
Let me hear from our numbers guy here on the council, Mr. Barson.
Yeah, Alva, could we ask you to explain Meander Estates, they're at the 1 and 1/2 rate? What was their contribution? How was that one developed? Could you bring us up to that?
Almost about 3/4 of a million total. They had three different phases, about 600 homes, and they're pretty much all the way sold out now.
But they built, they built their own structures inside, right? And what did we provide for them?
Just the water itself, water and sewer, and that was it. They provided all the lift stations, they provided all the infrastructure inside and outside.
And how far did they have to build to?
At the time, they actually had run all the way up to 377. Had run water line all the way up, all the way down Business Boulevard, and then all the way down to Meander, which is roughly, I'd say, a good, almost mile of pipeline just to get to Meander.
Just to get to Meander. So, Meander Estates paid for water and sewer from 377 to their, to their location.
Yes, sir. What they did do is they did enter into a prorate agreement with the city, and then as people were tying on, they actually got reimbursed in that manner on some of their stuff.
They did?
They did.
They did. Okay, so they potentially could have been reimbursed for 100% of their expenditure on that.
Possibility, yes, on the offsite, over to their development.
Mr. Mayor, I would also submit there's another way to look at this issue rather than saying the 150 up front, then reducing it at the end. Perhaps you could look at it and say, we'll do the 1% up front and then go to the 150% down the road, make some different determination about that. So, just sort of flipping the argument from 150 up front will come down to 1 if it goes, maybe we start at 1% and go to 150 if it doesn't work.
If it doesn't pan out, is what you're saying. That's, that's a different way of looking at it.
About 40 houses here, right? How much water are we talking about? Not millions.
Exactly.
Not a bad idea, but I think if you told those people, it'd have to be disclosed in your closing in real estate, I believe, I don't know who's here.
Well, we're not a sales guy.
And you'd be in trouble there. That would never work. I got the same problem at, over at the...
Mr. Wilson, you have something to add regarding that?
Just, Murad Moliadi is the President's Centurion American. He cannot be here tonight because he is in Arizona, but he will be present at the next meeting, and he does want to have a meeting prior to that. I'm requesting the two-week delay from instruction from Mr. Moliadi. So, we would like to request the delay. We'd like to follow up the city manager and the mayor, and whoever else, staff-wise and council member-wise, and come back in a reasonable amount of time with an agreed-upon solution to this, and that's where we would like to go if that, if there's not objections.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion. We grant the petitioner's request.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to allow for a postponement until the next meeting in October, which is going to be the October 16th. We have a motion on the floor. Any other discussion regarding it?
Is that a postponement for the entire?
Yes, postpone this discussion and this decision on this agenda item until the 16th. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much for your time. At this time, the city council will take a recess. We'll reconvene at our normal time of 6 o'clock, and we'll see you there. Today at 4:30 with a joint meeting of the Planning and Zoning and the City Council. We're going to pick up where we left off. Right now, we're moving on to a presentation. This is a presentation of a 2012 Female and Male Athlete of the Year Award by our own Patrick Murphy. And I would like to make an announcement that the city of Granbury has been given the Texas Amateur Athletic Federation Gold Member City Award, which is based on outstanding participation for teams and individuals within the TAAF. Patrick, I believe you've got that award right there. I'm going to come down there and let you present it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. My name is Patrick Murphy. I'm the Recreation Coordinator for the city of Granbury Parks Recreation Department. I'm also here representing the TAF, Texas Amateur Athletic Federation, which is a nonprofit organization established in 1925 to promote, organize, and conduct amateur athletics in the state of Texas. TAF's mission is to create and maintain in the state of Texas a permanent organization, mainly local parks, parks and recreation programs. Representatives of amateur athletics and organizations devoted thereto to establish and maintain the highest levels, ideals of amateur sports in the state of Texas, promote the development of physical education, and encourage the standardization of rules of all amateur athletics, games, and competitions. And the first award I'd like to present is the 2012 Female Athlete of the Year. This young lady has worked hard over the past year. She has broken Granbury High School's high jump record while finishing second in District 4A and fourth in Region 1 4A. She was the TAF Region 4 High Jump Champion, which qualified her to compete at the TAF Summer Games of Texas in Corpus Christi, where she finished as a silver medalist. We proudly present the 2012 City of Granbury Female Athlete of the Year to Shelby Klein. The second award I'd like to present is the 2012 Male Athlete of the Year. This young gentleman has been swimming for years with the SEALs Swimming Program, along with being one of the assistant coaches. He lettered all four years in swimming at Granbury High School and qualified for the UAL State Meet. Brad is a TAF Region 4 champion in four events this year and participated in six events at the TAF Summer Games of Texas, as well as coaching some of the younger SEALs at the Games. Proudly present the 2012 City of Granbury Male Athlete of the Year to Brad Cade. Brad, why don't you go ahead and stay up here real quick? Brad, why don't you come on, stay up here real quick? The third award is the Region 4 TAF Male Athlete of the Year to Brad. This is voted by the committee made up of city parks and recreation representatives from Stevensville to Denton, and I'd like to present the 2012 Region 4 TAF Male Athlete of the Year to Brad Cade. I have one more announcement, if you don't mind.
Go ahead and add, sir.
TAF Amateur Athletic Federation Hall of Fame, which is housed in the Texas Sports Hall of Fame, Waco, Texas. On January 17, 2013, in Frisco, right before the Winter Games, Hall of Fame will be inducing five new members of the class of 2013, two of which will be, I proudly gladly say, will be from Granbury, Texas. Dana Valmer, which we all know, she holds a world record, but she also still holds a world record for the 8 and under and the 9 and under and the 25-yard butterfly for TAF. And Janet Steenberge, I don't know if she's here yet. Did she make it? She is also going to be inducted into the TAF Hall of Fame. 20 years of service to the Granbury SEALs. She has been actively involved with Region 4 TAF and TAF for many of the years. Her teams are one of the largest teams in the region and has consistently sent multiple swimmers to the State Meet and the TAF Games of Texas every year. Thank you.
Well, at this time, we're going to move on to our city council open microphone session. Hopefully, you got a chance to fill out a speaker card. Our first person to come up to the microphone is Julia Pennell. Please state your name and your address, and we'll start this big old clock.
Julia Pennell, 500 Count's Alley, Granbury, Texas. I think I can do it in one section time. It's two parts. First of all, several months ago, the city council was so kind to draw names for nonprofits, and the Brazis Pregnancy Center was blessed to receive that night. And I'm here to thank the city and the council because we fully believe the committee that one of the reasons that we moved from $38,000 clear to over $70,000 clear was partially because of the setting. And it allowed us to use the big screens, it allowed us to have a totally different venue, and even though it won't be free next year, we've already booked it for next year because we believe in that. And Mitch Tyra, we thank you for attending. Mr. Allen, we thank you for your donations. And I just wanted to throw this out to you. Because of that night, by the end of next week, the center will have, Darryl Lackey Roofing is putting in a completely new ultrasound room, new testing room, wholesale flooring is putting in new carpet, new tiles. Thanks to Brad and Penny Snyder and Gary Couch, we're going to have a much-needed new phone system, and Justice Plumbing is upgrading all of our plumbing. So, the city played a big part of that, and we thank you a lot. The next part is an invitation. This is to everyone here, as well as the city council. On behalf of the Design and Fundraising Committee, and you have the people there involved, myself, J.C. Campbell, Ron Bearman, and Aaron McLean from the Parks Department, we would like to invite you on October 11, 11:30, at the Jim Burks Firefighter Park, the children's area. As you know, we got the top, we've got the tree, the money for the trees, they're planted and set, and we're going to have a ribbon cutting by the chamber, a reception with a light lunch by Paradise Bistro, I know Tony, but I didn't get him, and hosted by HGMA and Granbury Brigade. This is the formal recognition of those people that have given their money and their time to make that five-year dream that we had finished at the children's area. So, we would love to have all the city council and mayor and city manager, we'd love to have you attend. So, and thank you for all your support in all these activities.
Thank you, ma'am. And I got another open mic request to speak. I believe that was from you, Dutch. Is that correct, sir? If you would, state your name, your address.
Hi, I'm Dutch Wilkinson. I live at 630 Williamsburg Court. My wife and I own the Plantation Inn, which is at 1451 East Pearl Street. What I wanted to address was to do with our tourism. I represent the hotel in Granbury on the Granbury Advisory Tourism Committee, and we're having some good meetings on that. I regret coming up when I don't have real good information on it, but I'm of this impression, we're spending most of our tourism dollars on long-range projects to do with convention centers. I want you to be conscious of the fact that that primarily helps the Hilton Hotel, which I'm real proud for. If you'll be serious, anyone coming here for a convention, that's where they'd stay. If I were coming... If I were coming to Granberry for a convention or any other place, I would stay at the guest hotel. We've only had about one event that I know of that's come in that's more than filled them. At that time, the spillover went to La Quinta Best Western, which is fine. That was a good place to go. The city did a good job of furnishing the bus to help people. That's very complimentary. But let's keep in mind that the other motels need business too. And the fact that when we're trying to get business, two months, six months, two years out, is not helping now. We're seeing so many businesses going out, and the reason I went ahead and put my deal up, Rio Brazos has just now closed down. We need to consider promoting things for the near term more than we do three years out. There's so many businesses that will not survive when everything is set for two and three years out. I implore that we consider, from the city management, from the decisions that's made, we do things that will help the near term. Be it our restaurants, we've seen them go out of business. And we've had enough problems on the courthouse. But let me encourage us to think about the near term, both for hotels, restaurants, and the whole thing, instead of completely way out. I do not have the numbers of how the dollars are split, whether it's 75% for convention, 25%, but I'm of the impression that most of it is for long-term stuff. We need to think about the near term. I appreciate y'all's consideration on that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Gentlemen, we'll now go move on to our consent agenda. I don't have any other speaker cards. It's a shock.
It's a shock.
But we'll move on to our consent agenda at this time. Gentlemen, you had the minutes from the September 4th, 2012 council meeting. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Mayor, I have some changes.
Ah, okay.
To direct those.
All right. Let's take a look.
Yes. Going over the minutes in Section, let me get to it here. Section 12, 128, it was the agenda item on September that had to do with the utility rates. And if you'll just follow me down, Section 12, 128, to the, you'll see where I made a motion, Councilperson Tyra Moad, that the ordinance amending the electric, water, and sewer rates, implementations, and approval be postponed until Friday, excuse me, until February 19th. If you'll see the large paragraph underneath that, if you'll follow me down to the last four or five lines of that paragraph, you'll see where it says that Manager McThethan replied that was all part of the audit. Now, I want to pick up there. Following discussion, Councilperson Tyra asked if he was correct that there had been, that there had not been an increase to the water bill for 10 years. Manager McThethan replied that was correct. Councilperson Tyra commented it was not time to raise the water rates or go up on somebody's minimum, and at the same time, say the city was going to lower electric rates. I would like to include the other question that I asked Mr. McThethan, and we heard his answer. I want to include that question and that answer in that, in those minutes as well. I also asked Mr. McThethan, in 2007, did city staff recommend to the council in 2007 that they needed to raise the water rates? Mr. McThethan said yes, affirmative of that. And I'd like that included in the minutes.
I'll need you to repeat that specific language that you want to add. In 2007?
Just add the question that I, the question that I asked Mr. McThethan was, in 2007, did the city staff recommend to the council that they should raise the water rates then? And he said yes, affirmative. And if she wants to get the exact language, I'm sure that I'm paraphrasing that a little bit, but it was a affirmative. The other change that I wanted to bring to the attention of the council, and this was more about something Mr. Perkel said, because when we got into this discussion, and I'm at 12, 129, 12, 129, if you'll move with me to 12, Section 129. That is on page, page four, bottom of page four. You'll notice there was some talk about the lack of me getting a second in 2009. We're going down. Mickey says he can appreciate that because he didn't get a second on trying to lower the proposed reduction in property tax. But what I want to highlight here and ask the correctional is council, where it says Councilperson Perkel. Councilperson Perkel commented, if he remembered correctly, he had seconded Councilperson's motion, but it died for a lack of a second. So if he had seconded, it couldn't die for a lack of second. The way that I heard it is he seconded, and I don't think we, I think the vote failed, but I may be mistaken. Nope. The vote failed, yeah. And the last item, and to me, it's a very crucial item, is all the way down into Section, where we reconvene in open session. That was the meeting of September 4th. The council went into closed session to discuss pending lawsuit with Jay Mills. And I want to make sure that the motion includes a sentence that I stated, and I don't see it in here. It reads currently, "Councilperson Tyra Moad, that in the matter of Jay Mills versus the city, the council authorized the city manager to go forward with the bid process to establish the real cost of construction for the boardwalk and fishing pier. The motion was seconded by Councilperson Allen." I want to include, and I stated very clearly, when I read the motion, just as it said, I ended it by saying, "for the purpose of moving forward with the lawsuit." That's the section I'd like added. And that goes right on the very end. For the purpose of moving forward with the lawsuit. That does it, Mayor. With that, with those amendments, I'll move that we approve the minutes. I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as amended.
Could I have a couple of comments before you get there? If you're going to say that Laurel seconded the motion for the change of the tax rate, then you'll also need to record that vote. That vote will need to be reflected in there, that it was denied.
And that's what I asked Mr. Perkel, and I let Mr. Perkel clarify that. Mr. Perkel, was that a, did you second that or not second it?
I did second it.
I would like to suggest that we go back and just review those specific areas, and we can bring this back for clarification.
Who's going to review it?
Well, our city secretary. She can review the...
Well, then if it was voted on, it needs to reflect in the minutes.
Yeah, Mickey's just saying, she'll...
Everybody that turned it down needs to be on the record.
That's exactly right.
But that was the previous meeting, guys.
No, he's saying just include it in the minute. That's all Mickey's saying, is just include it in the minutes, which I don't have a problem with.
If it was a vote, if it's a vote, it needs to be in the minutes, not in...
It was in the previous meeting.
I know.
It was in the meeting prior to this. It was just discussed that...
Okay, yeah, you're right.
Okay, yeah, I got you.
You see what I'm saying?
We just, we just said it during that meeting, yes.
Yes.
The statement said, okay, thank you. Well, that makes it easy, and I'm going to stand up my motion.
I'll second your motion.
Thank you, Mickey.
All right, we have a motion in a second to adopt the minutes as amended. Yes, ma'am. As amended by Councilperson Tyra. That's correct. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion regarding amendment of the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Brings us down to deliberation item number two. This time, we'll open a public hearing regarding a request of Walmart for a specific use permit. That's an SUP for 735 East Highway 377 to allow the use of three cargo containers for bulk merchandise and an additional 22 during peak retail seasonal stockup, which is October through to January. On Lot 1R1, Block 1 of the Durham Overstreet Edition, and consider approval of an ordinance provided for said SUP. I see we have the manager here, Mr. Craig Rowland, I believe?
Yes, sir.
All right. Mr. Rowland, before we go into this, I've driven by the place through the back of Walmart on several occasions prior to a timeframe that's spelled out in your seasonal stockup of October to January. And I know I've counted more than three cargo containers. Are you putting in this application and sort of fudging a little bit through the years? I mean, it seems like you should adopt a reasonable idea as to how many cargo containers you need during your off-peak season as well.
Yes, sir.
You feel like three is adequate?
Actually, probably not. The first SUP that was brought forth was the previous store manager, so I can't speak to that. Yes, we probably do need more containers, but I was kind of under the understanding that that was the limit that we were given.
All right. Well, I'm just saying that the application that we've received this year
Right.
is exactly the same as it was back in 2009.
Right. Again, I was under the understanding that that was, is all that we were going to be allowed.
You know, you don't get anything unless you ask for it.
Yes, sir.
My wife reminds me all the time.
I understand.
Let's hear from council regarding this. We do have, this is an open hearing, I just, open public hearing. I just wanted to bring that to light before we get started on this. Scott, let me, let me hear from you. I mean, what, has there been any incidents of traffic or fire or any kind of contingent issue that might preempt them from asking for more than three?
Other than the numerical value during off-peak build-out time that's enumerated here, the city staff is not aware of any filed inquiries regarding violations, that is cargo containers maneuvering out into the fire lane, for example, or going beyond the color scheme that's enumerated. Generally, they all seem to comply. So I can tell you, historically, the initial application was something that was worked out between the previous managers. Manager, as discussed earlier, Mr. Damon Johnson, and the PNC and City Council at the time. So that timeframe continuum of no more than 25 during peak build-up and three during outside that peak period was formulated at that time, and it seemed to continue to roll with some momentum every time we renew it. So that's where that's coming from.
All right. But there's nothing to preempt the council from adopting some standard that actually works within what their operation is?
Not at all, Mayor. In fact, if the council wants to amend or modify, for example, Condition Number Two, to give him the preceding month in September, for example, to do earlier time peak build-up and go from three to 25 at that time, or modify the number three during the year as a whole, then that's fine. It's just really up to council's discretion.
Mr. Parson, you want to speak on this?
Well, I concur with the mayor. I live in that part of town, and I drive by there, and I know there's well over three storage units in that parking lot at all times. But it would be interesting to know what our enforcement procedures are. Understanding that the reasoning behind the, the storage containers are to, I guess, potentially reduce ad valorem tax, I think is somewhat unfair for other competing retailers for Walmart to continue to use it. So I assume they use it nationwide. Having said that, in the short run, I don't know what to ask them to do other than to build a warehouse to put their stuff in, and that way we'd have a fair portion, proportion in collection of ad valorem tax.
Well, I believe what you're referring to is their stock. This stock that's in those trailers is accounted for, is that not true?
Yes, sir.
I have not, yes. I would assume they make an inventory rendition and a personal property, but I'm talking about ad valorem, real property taxes, not personal property taxes.
In other words, the shed containers themselves are stored...
Yeah. How many, how big's the container? Forty by eight, forty by 10?
Yeah.
So 320 feet. So if you drive by there, and there's 10 or 15 of them out there, you're talking about some square feet.
So are you insinuating that you'd like to see the Walmart Corporation build a large storage facility so we could collect ad valorem taxes on it?
That's correct.
That's what, that's what I thought. And I appreciate that, because I think that's a fair assumption. But unfortunately, we're here tonight to talk about the containers, and I want to thank the Walmart store for being here, and I hope that you not perceive anybody as being, as being adversarial with you. I've lived over there for seven years.
No one's been hated, but they were.
And I really appreciate those containers all being the same color. And as I have inquired, I have not heard that there's been any kind of negative enforcement. There's been no kind of action by the fire department because of those storage containers. So please, Mayor, if you could make a recommendation to guide this council, and let's give them 25, 30, whatever necessary they need, and also support you in that.
I think the only thing with the 25, the problem that it was opposed is where to put them. You know, it'd be unsightable on the side of the building or wherever. 25 is basically what we can fit behind the building.
Well, you've never got...
It'd be out of sight.
And I don't believe that's been an issue, that 25 has limited your capacity.
Right.
What, what has been the issue, though, is the three containers throughout the rest of the year. My proposal would be that tell me what the logical number is that you actually utilize there so we can put it into the SUP without you flipping over.
Logical would be five.
Five.
A year, yeah. And that's basically probably what we've had, four to five.
There you go, Mayor.
All right. Then...
Here, I got a question.
All right, Mr. Allen.
Are you saying, how many do you keep down there? What are you allowed to keep right now?
Right now, three.
I was by there when I got this package, and you got 24 down there.
Right, but our SUP goes through October 6th, the current one.
So you're wanting 27?
No, we're actually one. We've got 24 on the lot currently, right now.
So you want three more?
Three more would be, five year round, yes.
Okay. I agree with Mr. Parson here that if you take 25 at 300-something feet, that's over a 7,000-square-foot building. If the council approved it for a year, would you get with your people and try to get a building built by next year?
That could be possible.
And try to solve the problem?
It'd be above my head, obviously, but yes, I could, I could definitely present that to them.
Can I ask the police chief a question on this, Mayor?
Yes, you can. Is it specifically regarding any incidents regarding this particular area? Chief, I spoke with you the other day, and the other day, we spoke about any kind of recorded incidents of issue of traffic incidents or fire safety conditions that were back there. Can you just, for city council's sake, step up to the microphone and, and answer those kind of issues as to whether or not they have ever been recorded or reported even?
Mayor, we've never had any incidents back there involving the containers whatsoever.
Chief, Mayor asked my question. Thank you for answering.
You betcha.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor.
You bet. So with that in mind, I need to see if there's anybody else in the public that wants to speak on this matter. Not, we're going to close the public hearing portion of this. At this time, council, if you would, I'll entertain a motion to approve an SUP request by Walmart to allow use of cargo containers for bulk merchandise not to exceed 25 with a normal use during their off-season, off-peak season, to be no more than seven.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilman Tyra. We've got a second by, I do need to get clarification. We have a second right down from Mr. Hewlett. This would be for a...
No.
Oh, Mr. Perkel, sorry. This would be a SUP for another three-year term. Are you agreeable to that, Councilman Tyra?
Yes.
All right. And the second, Mr. Perkel?
Yes, I am.
All right. So we do, for a three-year term.
Seven, seven.
Seven, seven initially throughout the whole year with not to exceed 25 during their peak, season, peak of October through January. Any other discussion regarding this? Three years?
Mayor, I'm saying with three years, I wish we'd go with a year, because my figuring's right. That's an 8,000-square-foot building that we could have down there.
They wouldn't be able to fit that on their lot. They could maybe build it someplace else, which...
It's a lot right behind us.
You're, you're hearing all this discussion, Mr. Manager, and, and I'm hoping you're going to take it from here to the higher-ups and
Yes, sir.
speak to corporate level regarding the expansion capabilities that we're, we're talking about, because the store apparently is doing very well. Any other discussion?
Call the question.
All in favor of the SUP for Lot 1R1, Block 1 of the Durham Overstreet Edition, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Please... Please note that that was Councilman Parsons with the nay. Motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Brings us to item number three. At this time, we'll open a public hearing regarding a request of Karen Doherty to replat lots 234 and 235 of the Indian Harbor Resort Edition as lots 234R and 235R of the Indian Harbor Resort Edition, and consider approval of said replat. The property is located at 1527 and 1529 Comanche Court. Scott, it's my understanding they're trying to just shift a common line of lot declaration between the properties. Is that correct, sir?
That's absolutely correct, Mayor. You can see the property as it stands bordered in red. What we have is two recorded lots. You can see the lot that's closer to the structure that's kind of phantomed or ghosted out. What they're proposing to do is shift the line to the south in order to allow for a little bit bigger lot on the northernmost lot. We have a property that's in the ETJ. It was built to county standard, so we have a litany of variances associated with this, as we usually do. Variance to 31E and 410 regarding the county standard street as it's not urban. 33A to not provide 5-foot utilities along the rear property line. This, again, backs up to the lake, so there's no need to run utilities along for continuation. We have a variance to 35B to not provide a minimum 35-foot street frontage. If you look back at the plat, you can see the southernmost lot is kind of a panhandled end. Where they're tying that in is actually a pointed joint to the existing lot where it ties into Comanche Cove as well. So, that was a previous non-conforming width requirement. They're not minimizing that. It's just they have to go through the variance process again. We have a variance to 39 and 45 to not extend an 8-inch central sewer main to the street frontage. These are currently being sustained by septic systems. We're not increasing the density. The county understands that they would have to or be required to consider septic permits at this location. And 39 and 46 to not upsize an existing central water line or to provide a hydrant within 500 feet. This particular district is within the utility district. It has substandard lines, but they're all being sustained. And again, we're not increasing the density or the load on the infrastructure. Both staff and PNC recommend approval as presented.
Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this matter? We'll close the public hearing portion of this. Council, entertain a motion to approve the replat along with the list of variances for lots 234 and 235 of the Indian Harbor Resort Edition. We have a motion by Councilman Allen, needs a second.
I get it.
Second from Mr. Hewlett. Any further discussion regarding this replat request? All in favor of approval of the replat, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Brings us to item number four. Consider and award a construction contract to Central Texas Waterwell, PO Box 1184, Bowie, Texas 76230, for the replacement well 12A project based on their total low bid of $122,000. Gentlemen, this is a well located at Keith Street. The city advertised for the project and opened bids at 11:00 a.m. on September 17th at the municipal center. Two sets of bids were received, and this one wound up being the low bid at $122,000. The monies for this project are coming out of our 2012 utility bond fund, hearing which we discussed the construction and installation of wells, water wells for groundwater. Entertain a motion to award the bid. We have a motion by Mr. Perkel, needs a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Parsons. Any further discussion regarding this? All in favor of approval of a construction contract with Central Texas Waterwell for the replacement well 12A project in the amount of $122,000, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Brings us to item number five. Consider and award a construction contract to DAC Construction at 2200 Smithberry Road, Suite Number 207, Pantigo, Texas 76013, for the pump station at well 12A project based on their total low bid of $325,655 and an alternate bid of $321,655. This gentleman is also at the Keith Street location. It is for the pump station regarding the well we previously talked about. The city advertised for this project, opened up bids, a set of three bids came in for this one on September 17th of 2012. They ranged anywhere from $368,150 to the low bid of $321,655. This project also will come out of the 2012 utility bond fund dollars. Entertain a motion to award a construction contract to DAC Construction?
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Allen, requires a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Parsons. Any further discussion regarding this item?
Hey, Mayor, what's the difference in the base bid and the off-peak bid, eh?
The alternate bid, eh? If I can call on our Alva to tell us what the alternate bid means. I mean, it means we may be removing something from the project.
Yeah, we have different components that we have with the LAS and some of the chemicals that we have or the hookups to it. So, basically, we have the base bid saying, okay, we're going to do, you know, we're going to put the LAS. We're going to put all this system in it. If not, then it's X bid. So, that way you keep it across the board where everybody has the exact same, so you know what you're bidding. And basically, so we put that. So, if we want to change, then we'd go to the alternate bid.
I notice it's all about $4,000, it looked like, roughly.
Yes, sir.
I didn't know.
It's not much, but yeah.
Thanks, sir.
So, with that, any other discussion regarding this? All in favor of awarding a construction contract to DAC Construction for the pump station at well 12A project for the amount of $325,655 and an alternate bid of $321,655, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Gentlemen, I'd like to call your attention to item number 10 on your list. Item number 10 and item number six, we're going to open them up both at the same time right now. Item number six is consider and approve closing sections of Bridge, Crockett, and Pearl Streets on Monday, October 22, 2012, from 6:45 p.m. until 7:30 p.m. for the Granbury High School Homecoming Parade with a rain contingency date of Wednesday, October 24, 2012, from 6:45 to 7:30. This is an annual street closure for the Granbury High School Homecoming Parade. It does require a little bit of text dot approval, so thus the deadline of getting this permit turned in now. So, entertain a motion to approve the street closures?
Why is 10 combined with that?
10, we're just moving it off the agenda item, bringing it forward to talk about it right now.
So moved, Mayor.
Thank you. We've got a motion to approve the street closures, needs a second. Second by Mr. Hewlett. All in favor of the street closure on October 22 for Bridge, Crockett, and Pearl Streets, please say aye.
Mayor, just...
I'm sorry.
I did have a question.
Oh, I didn't realize.
Number 10 over.
I'm bringing 10 up next, right after this.
I own that one then. I didn't know why you moved it ahead this last.
I'm just bringing it forward to get it off our to-do list.
No problem. Thanks, sir.
Just making you aware of it. We, once again, just follow up on the motion and the vote, please. All in favor of the motion to close the streets for Granbury High School Homecoming Parade, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Taking us to item number 10. Consider and approve a community-wide holiday meal. This is a request by a few area churches. They would like to provide a holiday meal, but utilize our conference center to base out of. It's a one-day event, from what I understand. Is that right, Mr. McKethan?
Yes, and the reason we brought it forward is they requested free use of the conference center, which is against our policy at this time. But this is a free meal. There's not anyone making any money off of this, and it's community-wide. It's based with a holiday, the Thanksgiving holiday, and many of the people that will be utilizing this feast will be people who could utilize that meal.
And the specific date, is there a date set aside, or are we looking for an open date with the...
Shannon addressed that.
So, we're looking for an open date at the conference center that they can work with?
That's correct. They had asked for any date during the week that the conference center would have availability during the month of November.
Thank you. So, it's a weekday, not a weekend?
That's correct.
All right.
Can we make a motion to allow that to be open so the staff can get that designation for them, or do we need to claim a date tonight?
No, I think we're just talking about here about the actual making the place complimentary availability based upon staff input.
Mayor, I move that we approve a community-wide holiday meal, or we approve that the conference center be used free of charge to the group who puts on the community-wide holiday meal for the month of November.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Tyra to allow free use by this group. We don't even know the name of this group. We don't know which church is taking the charge. Is that correct?
Actually, it's several churches that have come together and several nonprofits that have come together.
But it is all nonprofits.
That's correct.
Yeah, what I understood from in the packet, that it was churches that come together for the purpose of feeding people who are not going to be able to enjoy a meal. This is an opportunity for us to actually partner with the churches and the local other groups who are going to provide meals. There's going to be vendors as well. There's going to be people like stores. I'm not mentioning a specific name. It'll be giving food. It'll be providing food free of charge.
I think it's through the churches, Mr. Tyra.
Those churches will be getting donations as well.
I think we ought to find out who we're dealing with here. I mean, we're making a motion and seconding on something. We don't know who this group is, what churches it is.
Well, let's...
Why don't we stick with the agenda, just the approval of the...
Why don't we get the pending approval of the city staff as far as availability, come back with more information, and we'll, we're saying the concept, we're saying the concept is a good thing, but we do need some more detail.
The concept is fine, but we went through this where we had a drawing for free use of the, and we got a congratulation for allowing that free use. But where were they whenever we did the drawing and said we didn't have any other days available for charity?
The way I understood this, Mayor, and you correct me from wrong, and maybe the staff can correct me from wrong, but this was a spontaneous idea that came together through several churches. Those churches are looking for a shelter over their head to provide the food to those folks. This is not some kind of event where somebody's going to be raising a lot of funds. These people are going to be giving of their time, and I'm pleading with the council to please approve this night so they can get on with this.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but did I ever get a second from anybody regarding this?
Can we restate?
Hang on. I never heard a second, so we'll say the first part of that died for lack of a second, so let's move on. Do I hear any kind of a motion?
Mayor, I make a motion that we consider and approve a community-wide holiday meal. Now, if they want to talk about something later on, we can, but just approve the meal.
And I second that.
For use at the conference center?
No, no.
No?
We're just approving that there will be a holiday meal. Now, if they come up later on and want to ask for the conference center or whatever, I mean, it doesn't say this on here. All it's saying is consider and approve a community-wide...
Did you read the packet where it talked about the churches coming together? I'm just saying, I appreciate what you're saying.
Yeah, it talked about that, but I mean, we still, the date is not on here. It's not on here.
And what they're really asking for is a shelter on the top of their head where they can serve this food at, and that's the big event that we're trying to get through the council tonight. And if you made a motion, I'm going to pull my second back unless you allow the conference center to be given to them for free.
It doesn't say it on here, Mitch.
I'm not in charge of the conference center. I'm not going to...
No, as a council member, we can allow the group...
Well, I know, but I mean, I don't even know what the, I don't know what's going on there right now. I don't know what the dates are. I mean...
Well, that's why I was suggesting that city staff figure out what date works during the middle of the week.
Before we go forward, we just want to make the council aware of this. We'll go forward, and we'll get the date, we'll get all the people involved, and we'll come back with a presentation of things.
All right. Did we ever get a second on that motion? If not, that dies away for...
Yeah, but he threw it.
And then I pulled back.
He pulled back his second.
The conference center.
I'll second Mitch's motion.
It wasn't Mitch's, it was... We have a motion and a second now. We have a motion for Mr. Hewlett. We have a second for Mr. Allen now to consider and approve a community-wide holiday meal. And this is for an approve a community-wide holiday meal with no further stipulation. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. That motion carries. So, Ms. Snyder, we just need more detail so we can clarify the use of the conference center on a future date, please.
That's fine. I'll work with the meeting planner and the churches, and we will bring that back forward.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Item number seven. Consider adoption of a resolution providing for nomination of two candidates to fill two director positions on the Hood County Appraisal District Board of Directors. The terms of the current appraisal board directors, Mr. Brian Thomas, and we do have a current vacant position, which was previously held by Charlie Cloud, will expire on December 31st of 2012. Mr. Thomas has expressed willingness to serve another term if elected. Pursuant to Section 6.03 Property Tax Code and Section 6.031, as amended by the Hood County taxing entities, before October 15th, each taxing entity may nominate one candidate for each position to be filled and submits the names and address by written resolution to chief appraiser before October 15th. Now, I do want to remind you that anybody that's an elected official may serve on the board of directors. We do have a current person, Brian Thomas, who's currently sitting on the board that has expressly shown some interest in continuing to serve. We also have, I believe, Mr. Hewlett, you have expressed an interest in serving. I do want to remind council that this is a decision made not just by the city of Granbury, but it's by all taxing entities within Hood County. So, that includes the Granbury School Board, the Hospital District, the city of Crescent, the city of Toler, and Leipan. Anybody that is a taxing entity is allowed to nominate. In fact, the county of Hood can also suggest nominations. What we have before us, though, is a request from Greg Stewart to put in our nominations. So, I'd entertain a motion to nominate Brian Thomas and our very own Nan Hewlett to serve on the Hood County Appraisal District Board of Directors.
Who? Nan?
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Tyra. We have a second by Mr. Allen. Any further discussion? All in favor of said nominees and the adoption of a resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. Item number eight. This is a resolution of the city council of the city of Granbury. Consider adoption of this resolution supporting the legislative activities and goals of the ATMS Texas municipalities before the Texas Legislature, as they relate to the setting of natural gas rates and regulation of gas utilities, finding and determining that the meeting at which this resolution was passed was in accordance with the requirements of the Texas Open Meetings Act, making other findings and provisions related to subject and declaring an effective date. Gentlemen, what we have before us is a request by ATM. We heard from them when it came to the rates passed by ATMS onto their customers. We now are looking at this group of attorneys wanting to serve as lobbyists on behalf of ATM. I think that's the best terminology for this. There are monies outside of the city coffers that will handle the fund. There's a predetermined fund with approximately $25,000 in it. So, as I read it, there is no current out-of... So, as I read it, there is no current out-of-pocket expenses should we agree to adopt this resolution. Entertain a motion to adopt proposed resolution as presented.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor, understanding that this is in a legislative effort to maintain local control over gas rates as opposed to the RTC.
We have a motion by Mr. Parson. Requires a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Perkel. Any further discussion regarding this? All in favor of said resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We are moving on to our last agenda item of the evening. Discuss and approve the potential options or contracts regarding the completion of the Opera House redevelopment project. As has been the norm for the city council, we've been keeping this item on the agenda list for any updates. The latest thing I think to bring forward is there is still a design-build contract with Brian Gaffin Architect. He was previously approved by the city council earlier in the year, and that design portion of that contract is still being handled by Gaffin Architecture. However, we are looking at a recent turn of events and moving forward with discussion with Scott Tucker Construction to handle the build-out portion, or the construction portion of the agreement as assigned by Mr. Gaffin. Currently, we are working with Scott Tucker Construction LLC. They are going out to look for additional bids from subcontractors. They brought together a proposal, which was a bit high in evaluation by what we had previously understood was the design-build cost. And I believe we're just going to let it rest with that. Do you have anything? You serve on the committee. Mr. McKethen, do you have anything to add?
Well, like you said, we've been meeting with Stewart, with Scott Tucker and Associates, with Terry Cohn, who is our project manager. And they are currently, and they're working real hard at sending it out to bid. I think that's key, because they're going to ask for three to five bids on each component of the construction, which will really, in essence, bid the project out and will know what the real true cost is. And then they're also coming back with design changes that are not of major structure, maybe even cosmetic structure, to also try to save money. So, we're going to try to take it down as much as possible, and then we'll review that. Our goal is to have you a new number by the next meeting.
Alright.
So, what we're looking at here is $2,382,000 for the remodel. Is that what I'm reading?
That's what they did, using the numbers from the Gaffin subcontractors and other subcontractors.
Is the representative, Mr. Tucker?
He was coming from Fort Worth. I don't see him here yet, so he was just going to read, he was just going to say what I was saying was that he needs time to go back and... Because see, we only finished the actual contracts to get him qualified. Stewart can talk about this, but we finished the contracts to make him qualified for the design bill.
Assigned.
You know? And so, he had like maybe two days to pull that number together, and he says, I need more...
We've signed a contract with him for the design bill?
No.
No.
No, we have not, uh, signatured.
That was unaccepted, so we were going back to try to see what that number, so he can find to him.
We haven't, we haven't signed a contract to rebuild it for $2,300,000?
No.
So, no one's here tonight to talk about the details that are in...
I know, he's probably on his way, but I don't see him in the audience.
I think we can address some of those issues if you want to, Mr. Parson.
Terry Cohn's here, too. He might be able to address some of the issues.
One thing I would like to point out, where we did see a cost factor increase, was the requirement by the local government code that all subcontractors pay a fair wage and also handle and carry workers' compensation. As a result, a lot of the subs that were originally bid wound up backing off of the project and basically saying they weren't interested.
They didn't, they didn't do that on the first go-round, did they, Mayor?
That's, apparently, nobody paid attention to that local government requirement.
That's a big problem here, because we're getting dilly-dally drawl for two, a year here. Every time we come up with something, we come up with something new that costs taxpayers $200,000, $300,000, $400,000. And I know that we just let out bids for the airport hangars. They wouldn't require it. Just got a bid in yesterday, excuse me, just got a bid in yesterday on the boat dock lounge. They didn't require it.
They are.
Conference Center was built without it. This city hall was built without it. How come the Opera House is all at once getting it?
All I know is what our legal counselor says.
It ain't fair.
And just, since this subject has been opened up, Mayor, and there is some major frustration by a select few that has been involved in this, and I hope all elected officials feel that same pain, because the fact is that there were things done in good faith by this council to move forward. And as Tony made it very clear and articulated, that but every time we turned a corner to have a resolution or a resolve, then something else was required. Now, I did a little research on this last minute, and for the audience, we got this in an email, and it showed these requirements concerning wages and workman's comp. And so, talking to staff, and staff that had been here for years, as Tony stated, this building was not built with that wage type of requirement. And as anybody that understands construction understands that when you talk like that, of course, it sounds like union-type stuff, and that's exactly what it is, to make it simple to understand, because it sets the wage at a minimum, and it raises the cost of construction by hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, I'm glad that not everybody's here to discuss this tonight, because I hope they go back and do some research. There is a actual federal law out there, and it may be state, but I think it's in the federal statutes, called the Davis and Baker Law, which absolutely allows the city to do some things that they've done in the past and not meet those requirements. Or if, in fact, we're supposed to meet those requirements, then why didn't we meet them before? So, Tony, I appreciate what you said. Obviously, we don't have the people here tonight to discuss the issues and get us some affirmative, solid answers, like we've been asking for, for the last 12 months.
We do have a legal counselor on staff, and so I...
I'm very familiar with it. I'm a third-tier attorney.
We'll hear from the city attorney right now.
Mr. Tyra, Texas Government Code, Section 2258.022.
Let me redo that, sir.
For a contract for a public work awarded by a political subdivision of the state, the public body shall determine the general prevailing rate of per diem wages in the locality in which the public work is to be performed for each craft or type of worker needed to execute the contract, and the prevailing rate for legal holiday and overtime work by subsection 2, using the prevailing wage rate as determined by the United States Department of Labor in accordance with the Davis-Bacon Act, U40 USC, Section 276A, et cec, et sic, et sec, and its subsequent amendments. Further, Texas Government Code, Section 2258.022, Section A, this chapter applies only to the construction of a public work, including a building by a political subdivision.
Does it include airports, Mr. Stewart?
It includes all buildings bid by a public entity.
Then, why didn't we know about this before, sir?
I'm not going to answer that question. What I am going to say is that on the Opera House is a building.
So is the airport hangar, sir.
Mr. Allen, please let me finish.
I will.
The Opera House is a building. That's what the code says. And I'm not going to speculate as to why the conference center or any other building was not done that way, if it's not, because I'm not convinced it wasn't done that way. But I will tell you, that's the law. And that's why, that's why I put that in the contract, because that's the law.
That's the law, Mr. Stewart, when he went in there, when Mr. Gaffin got this nine months ago, sir.
Mr. Gaffin knew about that. We talked about it today.
Mr. Gaffin said he didn't know about it until this got brought up with Scott. That's why the price went up.
Either way, Mr. Stewart...
That's the law. I don't know what you want me to say.
The law is that...
I can't sit here and recommend the council pass a contract that doesn't meet...
Oh, I wouldn't want you to do that, sir. That wouldn't be right for the taxpayers for you to do that, but I'm just saying that we're going to be 2.2. I'm for going back to the single shell, just like you did Granbury Live, and spend 35 days and make it look that nice. They haven't sold out the 175 seats yet. Let's go there and save the taxpayers a million bucks.
Mayor, I don't think we're going to resolve anything. Can we table this?
There's nothing but discussion at this point.
Alright, thank you.
No. Alright, so, as...
Have we seen any plans yet?
We have actually seen some more detailed drawings come forward, and it is of the construction companies' idea that they can follow up.
382 didn't include the pit either, right? If we put a pit in there, that was an addition.
You'll have to add that 30K, and they're not even sure.
20K is what I saw on the other one, right? But I mean, there's a lot of details in here that we need to, I'd like to discuss.
Well, we're open for discussion. Nobody's wrapping up the meeting just yet, sir.
I see there's $75,000 in here for design. I'm hoping that's for an interior designer?
No.
No? What is that?
That's the cost of the architect, Brian Gaffin, supporting, being part of the design on the builders.
So, it's an additional fee in addition to what we've already paid for the building of the plant?
Yeah, that's also the purchase of air and emissions insurance, and it's also some contract administration for his subcontractors.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Engineers.
So, do we have any money in the contract to have it, interior designer look at it so that it looks professional when it's all put together?
Very little dollars are set aside.
Yes, we've already had them look some, and you know...
$17,000.
$17,000, I think they allocate.
And that's in this, in these numbers here somewhere?
Yes, of which some, some dollars have already been spent, though.
One line item that increased $178,000 called allowances. What, do we move all the flooring and all the paint and draper issues into that? Is that what that is?
Yeah, I would have to, yeah, I don't have a list of those right now, but yes, most of that was the flooring and those kinds of things.
So, there's some dollars in there for...
Yes, and that's why we're doing a cost-plus with a cap. So, if we don't hit that, then we get the savings from that, so...
And there has been discussion regarding the amount, say the amount comes in at $2, $2 million, but the original was at 2.4.
We've looked at flooring, carpet, and tile, and think that the allowances inside that number are adequate to cover it, or assume the contractor has?
Well, they're still looking at that, but yes.
Okay. Item number 220, what is that? Earthwork? 298, I see that's an overage. It's an increase. Where's earthwork? There it is.
Yes, the back.
Increased 8,900. It's $20,000 total. Have we looked at the bond packages to understand what monies are going to be available to move over to the completion of the Opera House, like the parking lot dollars? What else do we have allocated over there? Drainage behind the Opera House, I think we approved, what, about a $90,000 contract for that the other day? There's $337,000 left in that. Do we need to look at that and see if that's available to apply over here?
Well, we can, yeah, we're certainly going to look at that once we know the number, but we're, a majority of that would be taken out of the fund.
Have we begun to work on the design of the additional parking on the south side there, or not? Because you've got $436,000 there, too.
No, there is some room there, yeah.
Okay, so, I mean, we need to have, what, I guess what I'm suggesting, that we can look at firming up the numbers that are available in the bond projects to see if there's enough money there to do their portion, and then look at the bond agreements to find out if that money's then available to push into the Opera House improvement itself.
Right, what you have to do, you have to make sure that the bond was allocated to those types of expenditures. And so, we're looking at the fence, the group is looking at that, to make sure we have that all.
Okay, and this number, the $2,300,000 number does not include HVAC.
The $2 million does include the HVAC. Yes, it does. Yeah, five new ones.
I'm looking at line 15600 HVAC, and there's no number in that. It says, look at WBP.
On the reconciliation I sent you?
Uh-huh.
That goes down to the $2,382.
There's no bid on it yet, is there?
Well, he had estimated $72,000, as I remember.
I'm just saying, what I'm seeing, Wayne, is that there's a number here, $1,2382. I'm not, I'm not looking at your reconciliation I did earlier, but right here on his number, it doesn't include anything for HVAC, so I'd like to ask that you review the reconciliation.
But it is part of the $2,382.
Okay.
And in fact, there's going to have to be some work done for the utility to get to it as well, so that...
There's an item here called stage rigging, sound lighting. It says by owner, previously, how much money do we allocate? $250,000?
$250,000, yes.
And that was, as far as I understood, was just for the rigging. That didn't include audio, and didn't include video, and didn't include lighting.
No, the $250 included all that.
Yeah, it included a fly rail system along with the lighting and sound.
Fly rail system.
No, fly rail, the light and sound.
Draper as well.
Okay, let's see.
But you're right, you're still looking at 2.4.
But that...
You're still at 2.4.
Yeah, I mean, that's what the number is.
Right now.
But once the bids come back, hopefully, some of that will come back. And I don't want to be over-optimistic how much it will drop, because there's only so much it can, but at least we'll get a fair number from a bid process where more than one person actually looked at it.
So, Mr. City Manager, when will you bring forward a number that this council can vote up and down on?
Well, our plan is to bring it on the next meeting.
Okay, alright, thank you.
And this is a number that we can lock into a cost-plus, where we can lock this number?
This will actually be a ceiling, not exceed.
Not exceed. We're expecting it, and they are too, to be less, because they're estimating it based on drawings that, you know, that they need motivation, and we'll talk about that in terms of participating in the savings. Let me say one thing, though, the seats that will go back in there, they've been estimated about $60,000 to refurbish. That is not in the number, okay?
Could we bring Brian Gaffin up, just a minute, Mayor?
Mr. Gaffin?
Seems Mr. Allen would like to ask you a question, sir. You guys were looking at a different sheet than I have, so I couldn't keep up with you on the number part of it.
Oh, it was a question I had for you, Brian. Real seriously here, because I, maybe I'm confusing, I may owe the jury to apologize, but do I apologize to him? But I was thinking that when you bid, the last bid to come from you is 1.495, that's a change, $1,495. At that point, did you know, did you include the high wages in the workman comp for all your subs?
No, sir. I didn't include that, nor did I include several other items that had to have been added since that time, Tony. We had to put in a lift in order to get non-ambulatory people up to the second level or the balcony level. We've had to add some columns to help support the balcony area. That was a process that we were going through at that particular point in time. So, the number that I...
We've added a new roof, which is a big part of the...
Yes, a new roof, and it's more than just a new roof. I mean, it's taking off the existing. There's three layers of roof up there. There's an existing thermal polyolefin membrane. There's two layers of built-up modified bitumen-type roof. Those would have to come off. It reduces the load on the structure itself. And then there would be a tapered insulation product put back up there so that it would drain properly, and then go back with a 20-year NDL. NDL is a no-dollar limit warranty on a good Firestone thermal polyolefin membrane roof. When we do that, you've got to take off the existing gas lines that are on the roof and the existing electrical lines that are up there in order to do it properly. And the roof does need that, but it was something that was not included in that original $1,005,000. So, again, Tony, there's been things that have been added to that, and there's a list of probably several other, five or six other items, Tony, that would need to be included in that. in that. Some of those address the Texas accessibility standards requirements, but it's made it a much nicer facility. We went back since July, and we've increased the detail in the drawings to show raised panel moldings and some things like that instead of textured sheet rock in those areas. So we've made it a much, much nicer facility, one that Granbury would be able to be proud of for many, many years to come.
Okay, back to my original question. And I agree with everything you said there, because we had talked about all the items. But you didn't have the high price of labor, and you said you didn't have the workman comp in that price.
No, sir. My A-team subcontractors would have had that anyway, okay? And most of the guys that I had on board were A-team guys. The difficulty comes in the subcontractors like rough carpenters. And if I'm saying too much, Tony, just tell me to be quiet. If I start to talk...
No, no, no. What I'm getting at, Wayne said that the price on this is like $300,000 or $400,000 more because of having to pay the higher wages and make sure every employee had workman comp. And all I'm asking you is, is you didn't know about it at the time you bid, is what you said?
No, sir, I didn't know about it. And I think that the $300,000, and again, I don't want to put words in Bill Scott's mouth, but I will say that what they wanted to do at this point in time is they're being asked to present you with a guaranteed maximum price, okay? And a guaranteed maximum price is a bit risky on any project, and so you're going to want to make sure that you're covered. But they're being very fair in the savings split, I think, with y'all, in that it's a 70/30 split. If they save you $250,000, then y'all would get 70% of that split if they saved that much off of there. And so there's, when you look at it from that extent, I don't know that it was $250,000 or $300,000 on the wage rates, and I doubt that it was. I think that there's a majority of that cost came in in the additional items that got added since they had taken a look at it in July. And their look in July was just a cursory review, Tony. It was, and he says that, and everybody knew it was just a cursory review. So, you know, if you send it out for competitive bids right now, and you've got a low bid of, say, $2,000,000, and you know, you end up back at 2.3, or do you start at 2.3 and work your way back down to, you know, 2.1 or something of that nature? Do you start with someone that you know has a proven track record and work your way back? Or do you start with the lowest common denominator or the lowest bid and have to work your way back up through change orders and stuff? And so it's just two different ways to look at procurement process.
All right. One question, Brian, and if we, I've had some people ask me about this because they were concerned about Granbury Live open, and they hadn't filled it up yet. It's 175 seats, and Andrew's here, he might tell me that's right or wrong, that's what I heard. And they're saying, "Do we really need all these seats? If we took the building we've got right now and get a stadium out of it, it wouldn't have the cat and everything down in front. Could we still get 175, 200 seats in it like that upstairs and downstairs with the stadium? And still get the eight bathrooms and everything else we wanted?"
Tony, I don't know, that's a really tough question.
That's not the design we have before us.
Yeah, I mean, that's making me, it's really pretty tough. I don't know, that's a hard question, Tony. I'd have to think about that.
Because I'm just thinking, we could get it done for a million, or for a million dollars. That's what we got left in our bond, that is 1.2.
We could have been there. I'm not going to say the magic word of St. Helens, but...
Mayor, Mayor, Mayor.
St. Helena has nothing to do with it, Mayor.
Excuse me, just saying.
The back wall coming out.
Nothing to do with it, sir.
We had...
Lots of factors have escalated the cost.
One of the things that I think that we're all kind of looking is the existing...
You're the one that added those things in there, Mayor.
Yeah, I'm not going to say them, though.
I was there, you did it.
The fly rail system that was in the existing structure, anybody that actually had ever done any work in that existing building realizes that it was a catastrophe waiting to happen. It was counterbalanced with sandbags. Correct, Mayor?
Oh, yeah. I agree. I agree, the fly rail system was very inadequate there.
The fly rail system was very inadequate. And I think that what, let me throw out an example. One of the things that happens in a facility like this is you do get scope creep. So we start out, and we know that we have a preliminary budget, and it begins to creep up. And as it creeps up, one of the things you look at is, well, could we reuse the existing five AC units? Sure, you can reuse them. The refrigerant is outdated, so to purchase refrigerant for the 3DX systems that we have up there are going to be more costly. But could you reuse those five AC units? Sure. But on opening night, if one of those AC units failed, what would everybody think? So it's like, you know, while you're up there on the roof and you're putting a new roof on, then is it time to actually replace those five AC units? So that's part of the scope creep and where it begins to grow, and I'm not going to say exponentially, but that's where it begins to grow.
I've got more questions, Brian, but I'm going to save them until next council meeting when we have a number here before us, and we have the facts. But I really appreciate you, for you to get up here after what was talked about before you got up here, we appreciate that because we know this has been a tough project all the way through.
Well, I'm here to try to make it a positive situation all the way around, and I know that Mike Scott and Terry Cohn and everybody that's involved just wants it to be a positive project going forward, and so that's why we're all working together to try to produce the information. I can tell you that Mike Scott has been here every time you've asked him to be here. He's been at every single meeting.
You mean Bill Scott?
I mean, Bill Scott, I'm sorry. And the reason that he's done that is because he is that interested in this project.
Thank you, Brian. Well, there being no action being taken at this time, we'll be seeing this agenda item pop back up at the future time. There being no further business before this council, this meeting is adjourned.